All of our meetings are on tape and they are available online. So you should be able to, within a week, to view this meeting. And perhaps if you didn't remember something that was said by our auditor when she comes, you can review the tape of the meeting. First on the agenda is to approve minutes for the last meeting. On October 23rd, minutes were submitted by Councillor Kuzinski. We can't approve them because you two weren't here for that. So all I'm asking, is it okay with you if I put them into the record? Because he approved them and I approved them. I think that's okay. But I don't know how else to do it. Just put them in the record.
Yeah.
It's very small minutes.
He approved them, you wrote.
Yeah. So we're gonna do that.
Okay.
So I need a motion to approve the minutes that were submitted by Councillor Lynch, 5:9, 5:14, 5:29, 6:26, 8:28, 9:25, and 11:13. I move to re-approve those minutes. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mayor LaChapelle. Mayor Communication, other than what's on the agenda.
Yep. I'm just... I don't know the name.
So everybody in the room knows who's here. I'm Councillor Dan Rist. This is Councillor Connor, she's the President of the Council. Councillor William Lynch. Chief Dave Madder of the Fire Department. Joe Kuzinski of the Department of Public Works. Councillor Omar Gomez. Jen Galant. My goodness. Valerie Bernier. Bernier, okay. I don't want to mispronounce it. And Mayor LaChapelle is here. Jen is our treasurer and Valerie is our auditor.
Councillor.
Yes?
I have a message for you. On me?
I said his name. You missed it. Public speak. This is the time when if you have a statement you'd like to say, maybe a question, we can't have a back-and-forth question-and-answer time. But perhaps during the auditor's presentation, she could answer that question that she hears from you. So if you're here, unfortunately, I can only do this now for this topic. I do want to say, though, that all of our staff is available to the public at any time for questions. Valerie would be able to. And our principal assessor was unable to make it, but she's always been good at answering questions. So if you have questions that don't get answered by Valerie's statements tonight or are questions, you will, maybe you'll get them from those people. Public speak. Who'd like to say something?
I just want to say something quick. Not for very long.
Okay.
So I asked the city clerk and they said that 2,831 people voted yes and 2,102 people voted no. So I just feel that the city officials need to further explain these increases and what's going to occur, especially over the actual... That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Can you state your name? Do I have your name here?
Yes. I'm Fred Posey from Clark Street. I've been doing a lot of research into property assessment, valuation. And the thing I'm curious about, I just assumed that this was largely formulae written, you know, really with the square footage, lot size, bathrooms, etc. And I'm finding a lot of inconsistencies in my neighborhood, in particular where I have filed for an abatement. I also want to say, I voted for the school. I'm in favor of this. I knew my taxes were going up, but they had gone up a lot, 35% one year or another. And so I'd just like to know kind of how much of the process is formula and how much of it is subjective? And what's the oversight for the subjective part? That's what I'm concerned about. It feels as if the assessor or somebody in that office is maybe driving around the neighborhood, looking at houses and going, "That's a nice house. Somebody's taking care of that." And therefore, the assessment goes here.
Yeah, I hope not.
Well, that's how it feels. When I look at comparable properties mine that have a significantly lower assessment. So that's the basis on which I filed my abatement. And I'd just love to hear more explanation about that process. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Valerie is here to give us a presentation. Oh, did you want to? I'm sorry. Just state your name for the record.
Well, sorry. So I'm not gonna say how I voted on the school, but you know, it's pretty concerning to have tax increase with the assessed values going up. But I think, you know, that's kind of what happened. And, you know, we need to just be more forward-thinking going forward. I know I could be wrong about this, but I'm pretty sure that teachers, police, and fire are all contract negotiations in 2020. So being a, you know, this is the Finance Committee, not everyone can file an abatement. And if everyone did file an abatement, I'm not really sure how that would work, right? Because, I mean, if we're for the school and everyone gets an abatement, then how are you paying it for the school? It doesn't really work. But the other thing I just wanted to mention is, you know, the Vote Yes campaign, I'm not trying to say that anyone was dishonest or anything, but this is something that people who were ringing the alarms about affordability in East Hampton said. They said, "Hey, it's not just about the tax rate. It's the fact that people were selling the new school on the idea that your property values are gonna go up." And it's like, "Yeah, and how is that gonna help someone that's concerned about affordability?" So you have this great new school that increases property values and your tax really went up with that. So if anyone can address any of that, that'd be great, especially the contract stuff that's coming up. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Oh, sorry, sir. Go ahead.
I'm Pete Cassidy from the Passion Circle. My wife brought this increase that I mentioned yesterday because, you know, I run a small business out of Holden. And if I had to see, communicate this kind of increase in my customers, I would not be in business. And frankly, I really am wondering whether I have communication that's here. I can tolerate if somebody tells me why I'm making it like this, if I look at a 30% increase. And communication is pretty important and I didn't really do it. That really hurts. This kind of thing, you know, does affect my social.
Okay. Anybody else?
I guess I'll pipe in. I'm just gonna echo what this gentleman said.
Could you tell your name?
Dave Lockwood, Main Street. My property tax went up 42%. I think that's outrageous personally. You know, where's that money come from? Limited income. You know, I work three jobs as it is. It's not like I could get a work job. So I just wanted to explain why it went up so much. Went up 10%, I'd be happy. And I voted against the school, but if it went up 10%, 12%, I deal with it. 42%, that's hard to swallow.
I hear you. Anybody else?
I'm Jeanne.
No, Jeanne, you go right ahead. Go ahead.
I'm Jeanne. I've lived here 44 years. I bought my house at $21,500. Now all of a sudden, I get a $20,000 increase in my property for assessment? And I haven't done that much to it because, I mean, just struggling to keep a home is bad enough. And to raise the assessments, and I know my house isn't valued at that because there's things that have to be done to it, just like everybody else. You know, we're struggling to pay our things. And I don't mind a new school. But I am against you strangling the taxpayers of this town. And that's what you're doing. You have raised our property so bad that it's unbelievable. And it's like none of you care. Works for high school and now this school.
Excuse me.
That's my daughter. And she wants me to say what I'm thinking, okay?
Sure.
And it's true. That school was built on bad land. When she started in that school, and I voted for Whitebrook when it was put in there. And now you're gonna put another school with two stories on a place that is gonna sink again? Look at the damage that was done with Whitebrook. If you had said, "Okay, I'm gonna put it someplace else," I would have been more in favor of it. But knowing you're putting it in swamp land and on top of it, you're already having problems with the new high school. And we're paying for that already. Now you're gonna have us pay for our new Whitebrook, a gorgeous new building, in a place where it's been negative as of what? And anyone who's lived in this town knows what I'm saying is true. I was happy when my child, this child moved into that school as a first fifth grader in it and went all the way through Whitebrook. But to see what we're doing now and then you're gonna add it to our taxes and raise our taxes on something that hasn't improved? And put your taxes up higher? And I'm sure everybody's feeling the same way, aren't you?
Okay.
Plus, you're retroacting the tax. And I know that, yes, the state starts from July until the next July. And that's the budget. And I know the budget goes that way. But you should have known it was gonna start back in July, not retroactive it. So not only did you do it just one way, you did it both ways. And are you gonna continue to do this to this town? This has been a great town up until now. What's happened?
Okay, ma'am, I have to let others speak. Thank you.
Sir? My name's Eric. I'm a resident and small business owner of East Hampton. And I think that the group is going to be shocked to hear that not everyone's taxes went up. And actually, some assets were overlooked. And we're gonna be reviewing this over the course of the next couple of years, I think, because lawsuits take time. But I just want to let you guys know that not everyone's taxes did go up.
Anybody else? Last call. Ms. Smith?
I guess I'll speak. I'm horrible. I'm a low-reckard, I live on Jones Drive. So not that I wanna one-up anybody, but when I look at what my tax bill was in the first two quarters to what it's gonna be in the next two, it's a 50% increase. It went from 800 to 1200. That's a lot, which means that I'm gonna get a bill from my mortgage company for this over-escrow, which we get every year, which I feel like I have been getting for the last decade more than ever. I did not vote for the new school, not because I don't think we need one, but because I think it's excessive the way it's being built. I work in construction. I know how buildings are built and all that. And anyway, that's neither here nor there. But it's upsetting to me that we're doing this. What I wanna know is, when we move into this new building and we sell the other three buildings, I wanna make sure that you guys take that money and put it right on the bonds to help pay that down faster than whatever term you take it out of. Because I think that's only fair to the taxpayers that have to pay this. I'm also not an ATM. My house is not an ATM. I don't treat my house like an ATM. And I don't want you guys to continue to treat my house like it's an ATM. Live within a margin, and that's what you should be doing. And I think that what has happened is just the perfect storm of ugly, where our house values went up and then the tax rate went up. So it's like a double whammy. But when I was looking at what my tax value was in the first two quarters to my second, my house value actually only went up like eight grand, but my taxes went up 50%. So I really want you to be very careful and mindful of what you do with my money, that I work hard for, that my husband works hard for. We've lived in this town for 28 years. I've worked in this town for 35 years. I have three kids. They've been to the school, except for my daughter. We pulled her out in ninth grade. High school was a hot mess when she was there. And so, no more. That's what I want. I want you to be mindful of my money. And if you sell those buildings, please, put it on the mortgages that you're taking out for these new buildings. And I also wanna know, what I wanna know about the construction is, during the course of construction, are you taking out short-term bonds, which are lower interest rates for the construction? And then taking out the big mortgage at the end, the big bond? Because it saves money going in that direction. And I would like to, I would like to know some of that stuff. I also think there are things you guys are proposing to increase or whatever that maybe you should think about not doing. Storm drain. Maybe not doing the CPA. All of those things add to what we have to pay. And you just hit us with something that I think most of us are feeling very blindsided by. Maybe you guys were as well, but you guys shouldn't have been, I guess. But we're completely blindsided by this.
Go ahead. This person here first, then you pick.
I'm just totally...
Could you say your name?
My name is Deborah Tryon. And I'm totally confused now if this gentleman is saying that his, not everybody's taxes went up or his taxes didn't go up.
True.
If part of this increase is because of the school, then why wouldn't his taxes have gone up some degree?
Well, there's certain people are special in that.
I guess so.
Okay.
And that's Seagull Letter Street. I just want to say I'm happy going forward because I knew my taxes were going up a long time ago. It was in the paper, it was on social media. And if you paid attention to it, you would have known. I'm tired, I'm poor, I'm losing my job because I'm a crossing guard. I voted for the school and I knew my taxes were gonna go up. Yeah, they're high. And I don't know how I can pay for it, but yeah, somehow I will pay for it. So, yeah, anyways, that's me.
Tammy Court, East Street. When I had talked to a couple of people inside of the tax office, they were saying how everything's gonna level out. And I really wish that you would not mislead the people like that because in July, our taxes were gonna go down 200%. On top of that, yes, I did know my taxes were going up with the new school. I did not vote for it. I've got three grandkids inside the elementary. And I'll tell you the reason why I didn't. Because you're building it on a swamp. Again, you're gonna have the exact same problems with the new school that you had with Whitebrook. I went through Whitebrook. I was one of the first groups to go through Whitebrook when it was a beautiful school. And now it's a piece of shit, in plain English. We let it go down the ship because it was too expensive for us to maintain. Now you're gonna have a building we put kindergartners in with eighth graders. Do not tell me that they're not gonna interact because they will. I don't care what anybody says.
Same way.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
I just feel that what the city has done to the taxpayers inside of this community is a shame. And it was a shame when it was told to me by people who were on those committees, quote-unquote, "We don't care if people lose their homes. They can move out. They can go move somebody else, someplace else." Why should we? If we were born and raised inside of this town, we should not have to worry about selling our houses. I may have to sell my house because my taxes are going up almost $3,000 more a year. I am sorry, I'm a single parent, raised by my grandkids. And what you people did was wrong.
Anybody else? Last call. Okay.
My name's Kevin Pappin. I own a farm in East Hampton. My family's been in this town since 1846. We farmed, dad had the business in town. I just got a property tax bill where a land that I own down on the river, that I farm, on River Street, that floods. 70% higher than what it was valued for before, and sent a flood, so can you be the answer to me why that went up that high? Can't build on it. Well, it's good for a farm. I couldn't even get money when I bought some of that land from the local bank. I had to go to a farm bank because they didn't recognize the property of any value to it. But yet, my tax bill went from an average $7,500 per acre up to $82,000 to $89,000 for the same acreage. 70% increase.
Okay.
It must be that you're like farmers anymore, either.
Hi. My name's Rich Dorley. Lived in this town my entire life, second generation, the same home, which I hope I can keep. Where I wanna start is retirees, fixed income people. When I was younger, taxes went up where I got a big bill, you'd go get it, you worked overtime, you were tired, you begged for it. But once you get retired, on a fixed income, with what Social Security pays and where most people are with their retirement. I looked at the applications for seniors. I really think that's where you need to rebook. $40,000 total wealth, probably if that would be the case, that person won't be able to keep up with the maintenance. Because if you think about life expectancy when you retire, it's probably, hopefully, 2025, yes. So if you have $40,000 in the bank and stretch that out over 20 years, you're gonna miss it. Okay? I understand that also is reversed by the state. Tom doesn't get hurt, I'm violent. That's what I was doing. I went to a town meeting a while back where the council had sat down and they were discussing this whole situation with retirees. I come out of there sort of extremely disappointed. The council people, a couple of them were really well-listened and they were, you know, really good listening about the situation of retirees. Now, unless you haven't retired, you have no idea what retirees means. First of all, Social Security is absolutely the worst thing in the world to try and get involved with. It's very difficult to deal with. And the income, on the average income on retirees, $20,000 to $22,000 a year, which we all know is the poverty level. Okay, so then the next thing you're gonna say to me is, "Well, you should have prepared." And a lot of us, they're lucky enough, they have good job pensions, the holiday involved. If we're able to put money away, you're good. But that number is so far from $40,000, it's ludicrous. Okay? One of the suggestions that was brought up at this meeting was, "Maybe we can do it on a scale." And you'll have to apply numbers if you make $50,000 of income a year. You don't qualify at 30 or below, you do. And it would be scaled according. Wasn't a bad idea. Except when the councilman immediately balked and said, "Well, how do we know you're not lying to us? How do we know you don't have a bunch of property and you're not, you know, you don't have any income on it? And if you're gonna, when you sell the property, you're gonna be rich and you're gonna go..." And I laughed and I said, "So here we go again. We're gonna look and penalize math for a few people who are gonna lie on their taxes." Like, nobody does that. In other words, I felt that the federal tax law, the federal income tax law, was a pretty good, as far as I can figure, would be a pretty good idea where to start. It shows everybody's in. Now, one of the councilmen said, "Well, I don't trust this." You know, "What if they're lying to us?" And I walked out so disappointed, I understand what he's saying, because you are gonna have people that are gonna fudge. But the mass, the majority who need this break, you're affecting life, you're affecting quality of life by putting this tax burden on the seniors. They have spent their entire lives, my family, for two generations have paid taxes on a little five-room ranch on Teddy Street. I spent my entire life fixing that house up, keeping it together. I shouldn't have to lose my house because I've retired. There's a lot of instances. Everybody goes through something different. My wife worked in education, worked for Frontier School for 17 years. She gets a small pension, 11 grand a year. Social Security, I don't know if you're aware, of something called the Windfall Act, decided they were gonna take that from her Social Security. She gets $70 a month from Social Security. Ouch. So they allow her to accept the order. It's 11 grand a month she gets, or a year? Where does head fall in the property? These are all things that you, I really would ask you to look into quality of life for seniors. I know East Hampton's been through all. I've watched this town go from a factory town with Stanhope products, Lesno Manufacturing, Kenla and Brush, all of those businesses are all gone. I watched them all go. Watched the bad times. County Street was empty. It's nice to see a regeneration. But what about the people that paid those taxes all those years? They deserve better. Really need to look into helping the situation. Well, these are big ones. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna have to cut off public speak now. We have a lot on our agenda. I would like to turn it over to Valerie to give us a presentation. All of you should know that if you have questions, that some of you have brought up, a lot of your answers on why your taxes went up can be answered by the assessors. They look at your card and go over the entire thing. You may not agree with it, but at least you'll get answers. The principal assessor is the primary place to get that. And I encourage you to do that because we're not gonna be able to answer why tonight. I got this one here. Okay, Valerie. Valerie is our auditor.
First, I wanna say that I totally empathize with you people and my taxes went up too and I know how bad it is. So I'm here only to explain how the tax recap works and some of the popular misconceptions about it. First, the budget process starts in the spring when we determine how much the city needs to run the city. And that's all based on estimated revenue. Estimated revenue from the state, estimated revenue that's gonna come in from local receipts. And at that time, we don't know, we don't, how much is gonna come in. We just have an estimate. It's probably like round two or three on the state cherry sheet estimates. So we're pretty early in the game having to put together the budget. So after July, what happens is we have the actual revenue that came in of the prior year. Eventually, the State House votes on the cherry sheet numbers and we have state estimates of what our state revenue is gonna be. And that's our cherry sheet budget of state revenue. So what happens at that time is we start working on the tax recap. The first step for the assessors is determining the values. Now, I can't answer for you how they come up with the values. I know that they have a method prescribed by the state. I know that they use consultants and also the assessors take part in it. And they evaluate all the property for the year. I believe it's compared to either the two years before sale values. I'm not sure. But anyway, the assessors would have to answer that for you. So after the values are determined on the properties, then all the accounting information is built into the recap. We put in the budget that was voted by the council. We put in all the estimated revenue based on the numbers that are given to us by the state of our estimated revenue and the numbers that were used for estimated receipts at the time of the budget. We usually have to change the numbers a little bit because at that time, we've had our actuals from the year before. Cherry sheet numbers from the state have changed from what we used at budget time. And there's a lot of moving pieces in the whole process. Okay, so what happens is, the taxes are not determined by the values, they're not determined by the tax rate. What happens is, what needs to be raised minus our estimated revenue becomes the tax levy. And then the tax levy is determined by a balance of your values and the rates. So what happens is, the values go in, the amount of money needed to be raised goes onto the values, and then that determines the tax rate at the end. So the values have nothing to do with the total taxes. And that's a fallacy.
Excuse me?
The values only have to do with how much of the total taxes the individual person So the taxes to be raised are determined by how much money is needed to fund the city, including the debt for the school. And then the property values determine the tax rate. Because whatever, if the property rates go up, the tax rate goes down, but the same amount of money is raised. The amount of money we need is raised, whether it's by property values or by the tax rate. So if your property values go down, the tax rate goes up. That same amount of money is raised. If the tax rate goes down, the property values have to go up because it's the same amount of money that's raised. And the first step is determining the values. So once the values are determined, then all the information is put in, the amount to be raised is determined, and then the tax rate ends up being determined by the difference. If that makes any sense. And I don't know if I'm explaining it right.
It does.
Yes, thank you. Okay. So the, well, say you're raising... So the, so the, well, say you're ra, you're raising fifty-one million dollars, okay? That's, I'm just throwing out a number, it's not what we raise. But say you're raising fifty-one million dollars. You're raising fifty-one million dollars whether the values go up and the rates go down. In other words, the values go in first. And then you divide the values by, I guess, the number of properties to get your tax rate. Or by whatever, however they do it. So basically, if you're raising fifty-one million dollars, you're raising fifty-one million dollars. If your values go down, then your tax rate goes up. You're still raising the same amount of taxes.
What are you saying? The time, rate, rate for each resident would have been the same, even though if they haven't, they weren't, it looks like we weren't. It's that, we're separate. It's the same time. I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to call...
I don't know if you can say for each residence, because if your value was at one rate and all of a sudden something changed and your value goes way higher, proportionately, you might have a larger part of the taxes. I'm saying the total taxes don't change because of, you know, the amount we raise doesn't change. We raise one amount, we raise, we raise fifty-one million dollars. And once the, the values are determined, then the tax rate is determined based on the fifty-one million. So whatever the values are, divided by what has to be raised determines the tax rate.
Can we not, just let Valerie continue, please? I can't allow a lot of questions now. I'm sorry. It's hard.
So I, I just wanted to make sure that people understand that.
Well, I know, it's hard to understand.
Right, right. So, so your values don't really determine the taxes, however, they may determine the proportion of taxes that you have. If your value suddenly increased because they taxed you on property that's not usable and it should have been taxed as property not usable and it was taxed as usable, then you have to go in and speak to the assessors and ask and file for an abatement if they did that wrong.
That's the problem that probably go up.
Anyways, that, so that's a fallacy, number one. Number two is the problem of the tax bills, as was mentioned here. Most people don't understand that your tax bills in July are your preliminary taxes and those taxes are raised based on what your tax bill was last year. Because we don't have the numbers yet. DOR has to approve the tax rate before we can charge the new rate. So if the school increase was twenty-something percent, it should have started in July, but we can't do that because we don't have the approval from the Department of Revenue to charge those taxes in July. So from July to December, your taxes are your last year's tax rate. They're paid, they're billed to you at your prior year's taxes. So when you're planning for your taxes, you have to understand that and most people don't. So what happens in January, we've set the tax recap, DOR's approved it, the new tax rate's approved, so they have to charge the tax bill for July, the difference of your old rate to your new rate from July to December and then the new rate from January to June. So you're getting, in essence, you're getting that doubled because that's the way the system works.
Is that because of your...
Ma'am, I can't, I'm sorry. I have to let her finish.
Okay.
I know you all have a lot of questions, but I, I just can't do that tonight.
It'll take too long.
It'll take too long. We have a lot on our agenda, so Valerie may be able to answer your questions during the week, anytime. So please don't be afraid to call.
I, however, can answer.
Yes. This is really for the council to ask questions so that we can answer your questions without giving you bad information. Go ahead.
So if my tax bill that I got last July, the top line said six thousand dollars, that's the year, I'm making it up, the yearly tax, whatever. My first two quarters would have been one quarter each of that six thousand dollars. And the theory being that I would pay that for four quarters, however, and this is not a new thing, I know my taxes have always been a recoupment the last two quarters. So then, in January, I get a new bill that says eight thousand dollars. And in order to recoup that two thousand dollar difference, you have to separate it between third quarter and fourth quarter to recoup it. That makes it feel like your entire tax bill has doubled when it hasn't. It's, it has gone from six to eight. So that's whatever that is, thirty percent. I know that's a lot in my example. So the quarterly payment that you were paying in January and then again in March, isn't, it's not necessarily true that that will, or will that continue on or you'll, there'll be another with the new budget and the new, everything that happens in July, things get recalibrated again and then we'll be paying this year's tax rate for the quarter one and quarter two at the end of this year. And then next January, you'll have to rejigger it to recoup whatever the difference is and that's how we roll all the time.
It happens every year.
Yeah.
And, and I'm gonna show you how we, if you look at page one, this is the starting point for the budget and the starting point for the tax recap. And this came off of the state website. So what they do is they take your levy limit from your prior year and, and, excuse me if you already know this, I don't wanna bore anyone, but they take your levy limit from the prior year, they add to it two and a half percent because we are allowed to raise the taxes two and a half percent. And then also the new growth for the year. We're allowed to raise it by two and a half percent plus the new growth every year. And we all know when they passed Proposition Two and a Half, it limited us to two and a half percent because they were concerned about communities raising taxes too much. Okay?
I agree.
So this is, this happens every year. The budget is based on an increase of two and a half percent plus the new growth. And that becomes our beginning corner. The problem is the debt exclusion. All the schools that were voted to be built were voted as debt exclusions. So if it wasn't for the debt exclusion, your taxes would go up, the two and a half percent plus your new values, your new growth. I'm sorry, new growth. But because we voted a new high school and we voted a new, a middle school, or one K through eight, or whatever, as debt exclusions, what that means is that amount of money is allowed to be added to the taxes after the two and a half percent, over and above what you would normally be allowed to raise for taxes. So if you look at this first page, it says for this year, our debt exclusion was five million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
That's the money we have to pay on the debt.
That's the debt for all the schools.
For everything, not, and there's, might be other debt exclusions besides the two schools.
This is only schools. We, all the other debt exclusions are paid off and gone. All that's left is the high school and the new school. So if you look on page one, the state is saying, we're allowed to raise a maximum of twenty-nine million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars in taxes for the whole community.
And that...
That's our limit, that's it.
So when our taxes go up two and a half percent, I'm looking at twenty-three million, three hundred and six thousand was last year's levy, we go up two and a half percent, that's five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. That's a very, it's, it's a low figure when you're talking about a forty billion dollar budget.
Right. It's not that big, it...
And there's new growth.
It happens in every community, every year.
Yeah, new growth is anybody who built a new home or had renovations and they had taken out a permit, a building permit. That is data that the assessors collect and that's called new growth. So that's taxed differently because it wasn't there the year before.
Right. It gets added to the tax base. And that's basically what's happening is adding it to the tax base.
So that two and a half percent, if we didn't have the new schools, as I understand it, all the valuations in town, I think the figure was six percent as I recall, five point nine percent was the actual valuation that went up for the entire community. Some people got a really high bump, but others didn't get much of a bump. So it's balanced out. Am I correct on that? I read the...
I don't know.
You're not sure? Okay, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Lori about that, our assessor. But I'm pretty sure that's the case, that valuations are balanced and once they get it balanced, they set the rate. But the only way that, and the rate sets that we can only go up, that's two and a half percent, except we have to add the debt exclusions. Five, almost six million dollars, that's a lot.
Yes.
For a small community, for a debt exclusion. So that's where my taxes, I knew that was coming.
And if you look at the next page, on page three, it was last year's recap. And you can see down at the bottom, the debt exclusion is one million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred thousand.
And that's purely the high school.
Uh, there, I think there was a temporary borrowing for the beginning of the...
Yeah, for the architecture.
Right, right, right. So there's a difference there of over four million dollars. That's why the taxes have gone up so much.
I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but if you, that four million dollars is the new school that's at the...
Well, we have to, we have to pay the construction as we go. We took out a fifty million dollar bond and we have to pay it as we go. We can't, I mean, if you take out a construction loan and you're building your home, you don't wait to pay for it until the house is built, you have to pay for it as you go. We have to have that money in the banks so we can pay the contractors and everything.
As long as it stays in the bank and goes to the school and you don't raise my taxes, we can.
It will.
So, so, so on the next page...
Page four.
I have what they call the G E one, and that's the breakdown of the debt exclusion. And the four million, two eighty-two, five sixty-nine are the principal and interest on the new borrowing for the Maple School project. And the forty-nine, three thousand, one hundred and thirty-three, the next line down, are from previous borrowing for the Maple School project. The rest of it is all the high school.
Okay.
Okay? Now, if you turn to page five and six is the thing that we sign off on when we set the tax rate. If you look at page six, I just wanted to point out to you that the excess levy capacity is forty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-two oh two. And all that means is we did not tax forty-six thousand dollars that we could have, okay? We left some on the table. And if you look at prior years, a lot of municipalities are of the mentality, tax to the max. We did not do that for, and if you talk to Lori, she'll tell you forty-six thousand is not that much money. And when you look at the tax rate, but it's...
Well, when you look at the whole budget, yeah.
But it is a lot to our budget, right? So we left forty-six thousand on the table that we could have taxed for purposely because we knew how devastating this was gonna be when the tax bills came out. Normally, we only leave a minimal amount, three, four thousand or whatever. So I just wanted to point that out, that we, we did try to leave some on the table and we did. The next page, page seven, is the first page of the tax recap. And that shows you the summary of the whole thing. It shows you the breakdown of all the valuations, the personal property tax and the real estate, different divisions. So at the very top of that page, total amount to be raised, fifty-two million, seven forty-seven, five ninety-five fifty. This is the total to be raised for everything in the city, including...
That's essentially, no, sorry, that's essentially what it costs to run the city, fifty-two million, salaries, services, all of that.
Not, not subtracting out any other revenue yet. It's just the total expenditures.
It's purely the write checks.
And when the, when the council votes on the budget, that's basically what they're voting on. They're voting on the expenditure budget. They're not really voting the revenue budget because that's not known at the time. It's just an estimate of how we're gonna pay for it.
Yes.
Just a question, when we review the budget, and I know they're extremely tight, if we cut something out of there that we feel as a council is not appropriate or not necessary this current year, does that lower the tax rate or is the tax rate set? Because that would lower the amount we need to raise, right? So is that...
Right, but it, it doesn't have a very big effect, I will tell you that. I mean, if you look at, page nine is the last page of the recap and it tells you all the council votes. And if you look at the column...
I must have, I'm gonna do a run, fifty-two.
Okay. So the actual budget was only forty, forty-six, eight-eight, four, two, sixty-seven. All the other moving parts in and out are added in this fifty-two. What happens is they go in and then they're subtracted out. And I'll show you that on the next page of the recap. It's, it's kinda complicated, but the fifty-two includes what's being raised for C P A, what's being raised for enterprise, everything, the whole ball of wax is that fifty-two. Then the next thing that happens is they subtract out all the revenue that we can raise from the state, from local receipts. And then the third line, I see, I see, where you see it says tax levy, one A minus A B, twenty-nine, nine forty-four, seven thirty. That's the tax levy. So, so basically, you determine the total amount of money needed to be raised, then you take out all the money you can raise in revenue and that becomes your tax levy. Then the values are plugged into the recap and it calculates the tax rate because you're raising that amount no matter what happens with the values and everything else. So on page eight is your page two of the recap, and that's the summary of all the ins and outs. So it shows you, okay, there's your appropriations, forty-eight, nine thirty-one, six one six, that's your budget. Then it has cherry sheet offsets, which are the money that goes to the library, the money that goes to school choice that we don't get. So we have to subtract them out of the revenue that we're getting from the state. Then, so it's all the expenditures first, the amount to be raised. Then you have your cherry sheet charges, which are your assessments. And we actually have the State House notes for the high school are in the cherry sheet. So those are in those assessments. So the total amount to be raised, fifty-two, seven forty-seven, five ninety-five fifty. And it agrees with the first page of the recap. Then it goes through all your revenue, oh, and in that amount to be raised, you'll see that also is your allowance for your abatements. And we did three hundred thousand this year because we knew there were gonna be a lot of applications for abatements. Normally, it's in the two hundred thousands. So we knew we were gonna really need a larger abatement this year. Then it goes through all your, oh yes, and the other thing is the snow and ice deficit, revenue deficits. If you overestimate your revenue and you have a revenue deficit, it goes in the amounts to be raised. If you have snow and ice deficit from the prior year, it goes in here. So we will have worked very hard to cover our snow and ice deficits so we don't have to raise them on the next year's recap. Many, many communities raise them on the next year. We also work very hard to keep any deficits from happening during the year. We're conservative in estimating the local receipts and I'm on top of everyone to get all their reimbursements in for grants and on their appropriations so we don't have any deficits to put, add on to the recap, okay? Then the next step is all of our revenue sources. So you have our cherry sheet estimated receipts. Now, that's a gross number. So the offsets that go to the library and go to the school are above, subtracted out, and the assessments are above, subtracted out. So if you add those three lines together, you'll actually get what we're getting from the state. Not only is it, it's, it's still an estimate, this is the state budget, but I guarantee you at the end of the year, it's never this. Last year, our state assessments were a hundred and one thousand higher than estimated and in two thousand fifteen, they were two hundred and one thousand higher than estimated, mostly because of school choice, which is a moving target. And in some years, the revenue has been less than what they told us it was gonna be. Last year, it was a little more. So it, you know, it's, it's a net between those things. So you, you have to be very conservative in your budgeting, budgeting to allow for these things because if they hit you...
To allow for the state not giving us the money they promised.
Well, they're estimating. They're estimating. But they don't control how many kids go to other schools.
I see what you're...
You know, they don't, there's a lot of things they don't control. They're doing an estimate based on past history and that's what we're using. But what actually happens can be... But what actually happens can be totally different. So, and one kid can be thirty, forty thousand, you know? So it's a moving target, and it's like anything, you know, you're trying to guess, but it's, it's tough at that time. So, okay, our estimated local receipts are, are, in goes the money from enterprise. It's up above as an expense, it's down below as a revenue, so it ends up being zero effect on the total. CPA, same thing, it goes in the expenses, up above, and out, down below, in the receipts. So that's a zero effect. So, and all the transfers, the free cash, really has a zero effect, because it's in and out. The transfers, all of the other things have a zero effect, they're all in and out. So basically, it's just your budget.
Okay.
And then it comes down to the bottom line, um, that goes on the top page. And the last page is just all the council votes, it shows all the detail of the transfers and what we're going to do. So.
That's a lot of accounting lessons.
It's, it's complicated, but mainly, the taxes went up because, first of all, in April, we borrowed, it was a net of forty-seven million for the new school. And the reason we have to do that, first of all, our financial advisors got us, we increased our bond rating. You know that, we worked very hard to increase our bond rating. We got it to the highest rating we could get as a community without having a different infrastructure. Then, um, the MSBA will reimburse us, is it sixty-something percent? And it's up and down, depending on what things are what. So, but, it's a reimbursement, so you have to have cash flow upfront. When you start building, you have to put the money out. So you cannot say, oh, well, we're not going to borrow, because they're going to reimburse us. We don't borrow at all, we only borrow, we have to borrow to get started. And it's like a hundred and one million dollar school, we borrowed forty-seven million.
And we have to have that available to pay for the bills.
Yes.
Because they're not going to wait for the state, even though we have to.
Right.
Which is sad, but that's the case.
And unfortunately, the first two years, I mean, this year, the debt payment was four million something, and next year, it's four million four. So it's, the first two years are painful.
As usual, they get the interest.
And then, just like your mortgage, you know, the first, as the principal goes down, the interest goes down, the payments go down every year, and it decreases over twenty years or whatever, until it's gone. And, and some of the other debt exclusions are gone now, but we're still paying on the high school ones, and we're paying on this new one. And I think the first two years are going to be the most painful.
And the interest will go down.
Yes, well, they won't, yes, they will.
They won't.
They will.
They didn't, they haven't, they didn't when middle school was taken off, nothing's gone down.
They'll still have the two and a half percent increase, they'll still have the new value.
There's always going to be a tax increase, because of about two and a half, but, so everybody knows, that doesn't even cover the inflationary increases in our expenses. It may not sound like it is, but our budget is extremely tight.
But the excluded amount will go down.
It will go down.
And that has a larger effect on the taxes than does.
What I want to say is, we took that money out also with a bond rating that's very good for us. Saved us, what, a couple of millions of dollars in interest over twenty years? That's real money. Because if we had a poor bond rating, we would have to raise more money, and our, your taxes would go up even more, because we have to pay for that bond. So that's a very good thing, because fiscally, we are stable in this city. Unlike many other communities, we have a savings account, a stabilization account, that's very good. But if we had a serious disaster, like in two thousand eight, we had to use stabilization money just for operating expenses, which is something we should never do, but that protected us. So because of that, our bond rating is very good. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's one of the reasons.
Yes, that's a good part of it.
So we spent an hour on this, and I'd like to ask councilors, Councilor Gomez, Councilor Lynch, if you have any other questions for this, I, I have a large agenda to go on to. To tell everybody else in the room, thank you for coming, we hear you. I certainly wish we didn't have to pay so much for a school, I, I certainly wish the state would give us more, but that's the reality of waiting a long time to build schools. Um, what was I going to say? If you have questions, if your taxes went up a great deal, do not, do not be afraid. Lori's a very nice person, she will answer the question why, and for instance, the farmer, I guess he's gone. If he has an issue with land that should not have been raised, she can tell him if it's possible to get an abatement. But that abatement deadline is February first. February first.
We had to pay for a new assessment ourselves.
You have to pay your taxes first, then you get reimbursed if the abatement is approved.
But no, we had to pay for the assessment, we wanted our.
I, I can't answer that.
And nobody had come to us to fix our houses.
That's not true, you don't have to pay for the assessment. They will give you a check back, a check back previously, they will eventually give you your money back, but you got to argue. And it does take time, it does take effort, but eventually, you can and will win, so don't give up.
Unfortunately, we have unlimited incomes.
All right, all right. Thank you all, I know you're not happy, and I wish I could make you happy, but I can't, so, uh, thank you for coming. We're going to move on to other agenda items. Bill, you have something for the assessor, I'm sorry. Okay, let's wait until they're gone. You're sticking around, aren't you?
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And, and one thing is, this was, thank you very much.
Until it quiets down. All right, Valerie, you were going to say something?
I was just going to say that unfortunately, this was the perfect storm, as one of the people said. You know, people who probably, um, worked originally on promoting the school did not understand the tax process. People didn't understand it, they didn't know that they would get hit in January for a whole year's worth of taxes, you know? And also, um, the, the amount of money that needed to be raised to get the debt paid for, I mean, is significant. So it, it kind of was the perfect storm, and, um.
It is.
Yeah.
And I have to say that, and I know President Kopp is, all the councilors know, communication is great. We got to find a way to do better communication, I don't think social media is enough, certainly, the newspapers aren't enough. We have to find a better way. I've been saying that for years. I don't know if there's a way to do it, but we should look at that in, in this year, so that when we have these things coming, people at least are made aware. A mailing would cost like ten thousand dollars or something, right, Mayor? I mean, if we were to mail out a letter or something, it would cost a quarter.
When he went, he just raised, uh, a year, saved six thousand dollars.
So that's mine.
And the other piece of this is, in order to get, um, the bond rating we got, and to get the, um, loan that we got, we agreed that our procurement officer would manage the school project, because it's common for these projects to go over budget. And so the other piece of this is, if we need to control this new building that's being built, and make sure that they're economical, and that they're not throwing in sports uniforms and trying to do this and trying to do that. We need what we need, and we need to make it good quality, but.
Well, I'm very happy that the mayor is out of the school building. She will be the one. Can you?
Yeah.
Bill, you have another question on this topic?
Yeah. So I, I didn't really get an answer, I just was kind of curious, what happens if we cut something out of the budget? So you said it doesn't detract from the total money that we need raised. Obviously, this is twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we're going to be reviewing in a few months. Well, I, I, I want clarity, because, because last year, it was said that it just kind of gets frozen and stays there, so the tax rates don't change, nothing changes in, in that regards, and then it turns into free cash the following year. Is that accurate? Is that exactly how it happens? Um, you know, I, I think.
I'm not sure of what you're asking.
If the budget is cut, we have never done it.
This year?
But let's say we cut, no. Next year, the mayor, the mayor's going to run a fiscal year two thousand twenty-one budget.
Right.
And we decide there's too much money being spent on something, and we cut it, and the council actually votes it. That money, let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars. As I understand it, it becomes free cash unless the mayor tries to reappropriate it. No? Okay, what happens with it?
No, what happens is the amount of money that needs to be raised is less, and, um, it will affect taxes. But it, it doesn't have a large impact. If you cut, you know, forty thousand dollars off the budget, it would just be like the money we left on the table this year.
So in other words, that.
A million or more.
You have to cut it off.
Significant amount.
Yeah, you'd have to really cut a lot in order for it to make a big difference on the budget. And you can't cut the debt, and that's what's making the problem.
Right. I understand you can't cut the debt, but if there's some, some spending in the, in the budget.
Yeah, if you cut forty thousand dollars, what, we left forty-six thousand on the table this year. So it would have the same effect as that. We could have taxed forty-six thousand more than we did, but we didn't.
And then, so that was a follow-up to that. What, does that get lumped in the next year's budget, that forty-six thousand dollars we left on the table this year?
No, it goes away, I mean, if.
Just goes away, so I didn't.
No, what happens is your, your, your tax levy, um, doesn't change, the amount you can raise doesn't change. That forty-six thousand doesn't get raised, so it's money you don't have to work with.
To spend?
Right.
Okay, I got you.
And the next year, your, your levy limit's the same, it doesn't, the levy limit doesn't change, so you haven't lost it in the next year. It's just you could have had forty-six thousand more in free cash, we, we didn't tax to the max.
I got you. And then, uh, when we get certified free cash, is there a way that, um, we can look at how much we have and pay off some of this debt early? Is that, is that something that that's, there's an ability to do that? Have an appropriation made to pay off the debt early, so that we can alleviate some of this? Or instead of taxing the taxpayers for the four million dollars, we only tax them for three million and take a million of free cash to pay it off, so it's a little less.
You do that, you won't have any free cash.
That's why I'm saying, take a look at how much we have, and not spend it all, but, but spend a portion of it, even if it's five hundred thousand dollars, a, a portion of it, to alleviate some of this pressure.
I don't know, that's something that would have to be negotiated, because we have debt schedules. Um, some, like a temporary borrowing, you could do that with a bond.
So you get a prepayment penalty of some kind, if you try to pay it off faster?
We would have to.
I don't think you can, those.
No, we would have to ask, we can ask that question to the financial advisor, how that would play out.
That's an interesting question.
Yeah, I know that, um, you know, I mean, and not to be little in any way, but when you're talking about forty-seven million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars isn't going to do a whole lot.
Per year to, to the city?
But it's, but the five hundred thousand, to, to Val's point, you know, like certified free cash, it's, it's one point six million. So obviously, you want to make sure that you have what you need to.
Right, we can look at how many we've spent in years past, get an average, and then if there's leftover, there's something in there, treat it like that.
We have a meeting with our financial advisor soon, so we can ask the question.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like, I'd like to know that, and we have the marijuana revenue that's not budgeted, right? So that, that's all money that's going to be above and beyond it. I understand that we didn't get everything on the cherry sheets, and there's a balance and a give and take. But I, I just really want to make sure that, that we're really looking at every option available, and that we're exhausting everything, because, uh, you know, the tax increases, it, it, it sucks, you know, to be, you know, for all of us. And, and it impacts me as well as everybody else in the city. And I, I, I want to make sure that we're crossing every, every T and dot and every I. And, and if there's programs out there, um, currently looking at the pilot program, uh, you know, to see if we can build in something like that. If there's things out there that we as a council can do to help alleviate that, can you please let me know? Because I'll throw anything at the table to help this. So that's all I want to say.
Yeah, and we're looking at, you know, refinancing some of the debt when the financial advisor comes in, but none of it's excluded. And there's some of it that we can't refinance, like state house notes and whatever. But I mean, it may be that we can't change the debt, if we have a schedule and it's a bond, that you can't change it, you know?
I, I understand, but I mean, it's just a question that we can ask and, and find out. And if we can do it, let's try to put a plan together for that, that would be my recommendation.
And we have to convince the mayor to go that way, unfortunately. Well, not unfortunately, I think it's, it's the way it should be. But in a city, the mayor starts the appropriation process.
And while I understand that, Dan, I think Bill is spot on. That it's our job to come up with some different answers, you know? I mean, that's how government works. The mayor doesn't have to like it. We don't like everything she does, so it's fine.
No, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it.
And you just have, you'd have to work it through, and you'd have conversations, and throw options on the table, and let's talk about it. Because I think, I, I think you're spot on, I think we need to come up with something a little bit more creative than maybe we've ever had to do before. And, you know, we can have those conversations.
Absolutely.
And one of the things we agreed when we got the bond rating was that we were not going to use, um, our one-time monies and our stabilizations for budget. And in order to do that, we would probably have to put the free cash into the budget. I mean, then we'd be, you know, that's, that's what you're talking about.
We're just seeing what's left over, and then.
Right, and I can tell you right now, just looking at the requests that are in the system right now, we're going to be darn lucky if we can save some for free. Of course, snow and ice, the way it's going. I've, I've been getting requests right in left for, um, free cash, and, you know, it's going fast.
Unexpected expenses, normal maintenance costs.
We don't have to sell the rent tonight, but.
Should we move on to our first item on the agenda? Are we done with this topic, everybody?
Never be done.
I know, but I mean, for tonight, anyway. Two hundred and forty-eight, that was wrong on the agenda, it's two eighty-four, eight hundred. The agenda is incorrect, but as Barbara said, uh, councilors, the advertisement for the public hearing and our supplemental appropriation sheet is correct. I am going to start, Joe, with a couple of questions. One is, this is extremely urgent that it get done, because the DEP is on your case, you said that, because this outflow has to be fixed, because of reading the Hagen-Bond summary, we have two outflows, one in the Manhan River, one going into the Connecticut River, the main one being the Connecticut River, and it's the one that doesn't work now. So I'm assuming all of our outflow is going into the Manhan now, because that pipe has been damaged since July. Am I correct on that?
Absolutely.
So the urgency is that the, the Manhan outflow, if I understand reading this, it can't hold that capacity. And they want it fixed yesterday.
It, it can hold the capacity in the middle of winter, spring and summer, it can't.
Well, in the spring, when we have a huge snow melt or whatever, okay. So that's very urgent, and what they want to do, if I read this, they're recommending the Hagen-Bond study was to keep both outflows operational, but to make the Connecticut one. And they only asked, this, this project was not even on the risk projects that, for the entire infrastructure. This was something that was just an inspection.
That's correct.
So, and obviously, it failed, and you didn't expect it. So there's monies for this wasn't even part of that overall project.
Correct.
So, heck, that's all they have.
So what is, what is the, if we don't do it, are we getting fined?
No, we will, we will, we will. This failed back in June, so June, July, August, September, October, November, September, January. We were talking about eight months. And a representative from DEP was down at the other day on something completely different. He walked in the door, the first thing he says is, when are you going to fix that pipe?
Do you know what the, I was going to use the word levy, fee is fine as.
They could, they, they could, they could hit us with a fine of, uh, twenty thousand dollars a day.
Yeah. Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, that hurts my heart, okay.
What's the problem, what's the real?
Uh, excuse me, this is at the table only, I'm sorry.
All right.
So what we've got is, we've got eleven thousand foot length of pipe that goes from treatment plant, essentially follows the bike path, crosses Route, uh, ten, uh, five, and dumps it to the. There's a section of that that, that's blown out, so we can't send our treated waste through that pipe anymore. We're sending it into the smaller pipe, into the Manhan. That's, our permit says we need, this is the, our primary discharge, this is where we need to put it. And we're not following that permit right now.
So you have eleven thousand feet, how many feet is damaged?
Uh, right now, we probably have two hundred feet that, that's damaged.
And how's the condition of the rest of it?
That's what. That's what, that's what this is gonna tell us. Because this not only will repair the pipe, but it'll also allow us to hire contractors to televise that whole line and find out if we have other weak spots that we need to take care of.
But this is only gonna repair the two hundred feet?
This is only gonna repair the, the, the damaged spot, and it's gonna tell us what condition the rest of it is. So if the television comes back, the, the, the TV, uh, footage comes back and says, you've got a weak spot here, here, and here, we will be back for more money.
It sounds like twenty thousand a day, we oughta fix this right away.
What do we, and maybe this is to you, Dan, what do we currently have in retained earnings?
One seven?
Yep. I'm sorry, one point seven.
One point seven.
And that's where the money's coming out of, to pay for this?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jen, I always think I know this, but retained earnings is our quote-unquote savings account in the enterprise fund, like stabilization. It's not, it's, it's certified every year, but we can retain that year by year. We don't.
Yes.
When the budget's redone, stabilization and retained earnings are saved, and then we can keep it. So we can use it, and it grows year to year if we add more to it.
And what happened here, the failure happened in June, and July came, and retained earnings was frozen. We couldn't get at that retained earnings until it was recertified in October.
Right, that's why we had to wait. And then, I guess, mayor, the state held up the supplemental appropriation, so we didn't get our retained earnings until later than we usually did. Everything was late. So that's why we're a few months behind on it.
Retained earnings is the equivalent of free cash?
Free cash, not stabilization.
No.
But, but it is in a sense, because it doesn't go, free cash...
Only because we don't use it all up every year.
Well, okay, that's why...
It's the equivalent of free cash. If you close every year, you certify your free cash, you certify your retained earnings. It's what you have sitting in the account.
Yes, and, and if I understand it, then stabilization you can use anytime, but you can't...
Stabilization never changes, you just add to it.
Mayor, do you wanna say anything to this subject?
Is, is this gonna raise any fees on stormwater or anything like that? The water fees or anything? This is all just out of like the savings account, correct?
This is, this is coming out of retained earnings. The water rates and stormwater fees is a whole nother category.
Yeah, I know. Um, and the retained earnings is only strictly enterprise?
I have nothing else. I'll take a motion to approve two eighty-four, eight hundred. Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry, I didn't see. Go ahead.
Can't talk that out. No, the only thing I will say is that the risk reward scenario here is a little bit tilted toward risk, so this is why I think we, we've gotta do this.
I have also found that even in the projects coming up, we are forced to do these things, not, not only because they're old, but because the state DEP wants them fixed, because it's an environmental and public safety hazard. This is a big hazard. It's our wastewater. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Joe, this is up for public hearing. We should come this Wednesday.
I, I will be on town, but I will have representatives there that know just as much as I do.
Okay. Joe, the next one might be under you, that we're gonna do seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirty-three DPW supervisors. This was a, the amount of money needed to pay for the collective bargaining agreement for the rest of this fiscal year. And I ask what the percentage, what was the term of the contract and what was the percentage per year? Who knows that?
Uh, three years, and...
Do you know, Joe?
I never, I never did.
So this is normally coming out of human resources? If you can find that out before the next, for the, this is up for public hearing on the next meeting.
Yep, I should have told you. My apologies.
That's fine. So if I'm understanding it correctly, it probably costs us thirty-five thousand dollars a year. This is a half a year increase, so it's probably, for the next fiscal year, two thousand twenty-one, it's double this, but, give or take.
No.
No, no, this, this goes retroactive to July first.
Oh, so it is seventeen thousand a year? That's better. Okay.
So the money's coming from, some of the money is coming from retained earnings, and then there's some coming from free cash. Why the difference? Because we're running out in one bucket to another?
No, no. It's three supervisors. Two supervisors work for the enterprise, one works for...
There you go.
Very good, thank you. I thought I knew that, but I, I wasn't sure. Mayor, anything on this? Obviously, we have a collective bargaining agreement, we have to pay it. Take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor? This is also up for, Joe, you're done.
Thank you.
So I have two more items on the agenda which are up for the next public hearing. And I'm sorry, Dave, we did split you between two of the public hearings, but... No, we, we didn't want a, a long list of public hearings, and I knew that tonight would be a long night.
I got nobody in high school playing sports anymore, so if there's a...
Okay. So the next one on the list is the employer's share of health insurance to end the fiscal year. This was...
You wanted to fire a person to the end of the year? You sure?
You sure?
Yeah.
But that's a good point.
I'm not going anywhere.
Hank is always on your side. Well, Val wants to leave too, so...
It's okay.
Everybody loves us. A hundred and eighty-two thousand for this. This is because we negotiated that whole thing about giving them a premium holiday, et cetera. That's what this is paying for, the negotiation?
Yeah.
Am I correct on that?
No, the seventy thousand is...
No, I'm looking at one eighty-two.
Yeah, that's not that one.
Oh, the seventy is that. I'm sorry, I, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry. So this is health insurance for the fiscal, the rest of the fiscal year.
Yes.
But it doesn't include that particular...
No, that's...
No.
That's the seventy, which we'll get to next time. So why is this different than what was budgeted though?
Because for years, the city, at the end of the year, is unable to pay... The way the insurance works is the money is withheld from people's checks during the month, and then money is taken out of the expenditure accounts that same month, and the bill is paid for the next month. Insurance is always paid in advance. And what the city has been doing for years and years, because it messed up one year, is they were paying, holding off the June bill and paying two bills in Ja- July of the next year because the budget was short to pay correctly along the head, like you're supposed to. So what we have been doing in the audit office is at the end of the year, we've been splitting... End of the fiscal year? End of the fiscal year, we've been splitting the bill and charging half to the previous year and half to the next year. And what was supposed to happen in the last budget was the extra money to catch up was gonna be appropriated. But it never happened because the budget was so tight. And it happened the same way the year before. It wasn't fixed because the budget was so tight. So it's the kinda thing where we're trying to pay the insurances the way they're supposed to be paid, but we can't because the timing is off. So the budget is, technically, the budget is sufficient for twelve months, but we've been sorta into the next year's money every year to pay it.
And we're trying to catch up with this?
Yes.
I understand. If that answers my question?
So then, in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one budget, do we anticipate we will have caught up?
Yes.
So the next iterative, so this will be the last time we need to do this?
Yes, we need to do it just once to fix the situation. It's been going on since two thousand and eleven when I came here, and who knows how much longer before that. So we're just trying to fix it, and it wasn't fixed in the budget. We weren't able to, so trying to fix it now.
Okay.
It's, it doesn't have to be fixed, but if it doesn't, you know, continue to fester and go on and on and on, so...
So mayor, then this becomes part of the budget next year, twenty-one, so we won't have to do this again next year?
Right. We only have to do this once, once. This is the best.
That's why we're using free cash now, and hopefully it'll be in the budget for next year.
We tried to catch it last year, and it just didn't work out, so Val kept it on the two D West. Kinda paid things up.
Omar, or Mr. Bush?
Does it, um... I guess. Is there another area that it would, could come from, in the health insurance area of the budget? As like an intradepartment transfer? Because wasn't there lines in there for legal fees and stuff like that for the...
Under health insurance, there's only four line items, and the other two line items had a little extra, so I netted them all. Because it, it's not the total amount in those line items, but the other line items had twenty thousand extra or whatever, and I calculated it. And so it's minus that. So I only asked for absolutely what's needed for bottom line to fix the whole account. The other line items are the retirees sitting at school.
Is your question running out of this, this place else, or do you take the money from the... So let me see if I can find the line I was talking about. There was, um, so under the... Under there, there was, there was money put aside in this budget that had, uh, set aside for the anticipation of going, uh, against the contract negotiations if there was grievances. Right? So we put money aside for the grievances for the health insurance, and the unions battled against us, and we went to arbitration and everything else. There was a line in the budget that was for that, that we didn't use because it didn't happen. So I'm asking, I guess, could we take money from there that's already in this current budget to go towards that?
Where was that? Yeah. Only place it would've been is legal, right? It's not, to my knowledge, there's no extra in there for any.
I left my, my binder, budget book at home, uh, and so I'm going... Of course, I have one, yes. Correct me, man, that comes out of personnel, right?
Right, yeah.
I brought it up when we were having those negotiations in the finance meetings when the contract was there, and I called it out, that we had set money aside for arbitration, and, and that was kind of the conversation around, um, having money set aside if we, we, uh, we needed it for health insurance reasons in the future. So I guess, um...
Do you know how much?
It probably would cover this, I think, I think it was...
Really?
A decent amount.
I don't think it was that much.
And even in the verbiage, even in the verbiage, it said that that was what it was budgeted for.
Get your binder.
I wanna say it was under health insurance, and I, I, I think we could just do an intradepartment transfer as opposed to, to from free cash.
That would be wonderful, because free cash is getting tighter and tighter.
I'm scrambling.
Was this particular, was this particular supplemental appropriation put in by our former human resources?
No, I do. I do. Because we need to fix the situation.
Under human resources, or...
Where's health insurance? Is that under HR? The health insurance, not legal?
It's in the nine, no, it's, it's in the benefits, under the nine.
It's, it's in our, uh, section nine?
Nine one four zero is the department, and there's four line items, and they're all exactly what they should be. There's no extra in that one, I know for sure.
But that, where would, so you think it's in health insurance as opposed to like legal?
It has to be in HR or legal, but I don't think there's a hundred and eighty-two thousand in HR. Something like that, yes.
So, so twenty twenty will incorporate healthcare plan design changes to prevent double-digit increases in premium costs, and then, uh, the city contracts directly with the prosecutor's shield. There was something in here in regards to, you know what? I'm gonna find it. You can, you can probably go on.
What I can ask you to do is to...
I, I, how about you, we can vote on it, I'll vote no, um, and then I'll, I'll get you the...
Or extension.
Or table it until we find out.
Yeah, 'cause I, I have my notes at home, and I don't really think we can...
I'm happy to do that. It's up for public hearing. Does that cause a problem if we don't budget it at this meeting? Yeah, somebody was...
It's horrible.
It's horrible, somebody in Springfield, a little kid in Springfield was, uh, connected. Anyway, uh...
I did make a note of it, I'll find out what I'm talking about, and I'll get you the...
If I delay on this, does that cause a problem? Because I asked the mayor, give me what you need.
No, um...
We can continue the public hearing at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's fine?
Can we, let me ask you this. If we find out there is a place, will we change, change it at the meeting and it goes back?
Sure, we didn't vote on it.
Okay.
I would, I would recommend that if you find that before the next council meeting, you resubmit. And Bill, if you find it, you could send it to Val and the mayor and ask it that.
Yep.
Because then we could resubmit, and then it's an intradepartmental transfer.
Because I'd rather not hit free cash if we don't have to.
So that'll be held up at the next meeting. The only other one that's up is Fire, two oh two, two eighty-two, for fire payroll.
Because, it's okay, you can do the after, you're flipping pages, I think too much.
I missed it.
Oh, William. Okay. So are we also skipping over the seventy thousand insurance stipulation?
I had, I had put those on for the next meeting, because...
Oh, not this meeting?
Not this meeting, I knew this would be a long one. Those last two items are not for public hearing this week.
Okay. Yep, I'm with you.
So, all right, uh... You're up, David. Tell us why you need the money.
All right, so I, I'll just go over the ten line items, um, that are covered in this. Other than the, the always in the room, the overtime pay, the majority of this request is to cover the city share for the four firefighters that are starting March first and the federal grant. So the first one, fifty-one eleven, full-time fire regulator, the request is for sixteen thousand, one thirty-seven, fifty-four cents. That's the city's match for the four firefighters salary.
Can I stop you there?
Sure.
I didn't know we had a match for that rate.
Yes, twenty-five percent the first two years. And the reason that wasn't in the budget, A...
We didn't know you were gonna get the grant.
And as you know, the former finance director would not have let me put something in the budget if there was no guarantee it was coming through.
I don't think that's a bad idea.
No, it would've tied up funds unnecessarily. And because the government shutdown forced that program six months in, it caused ripple effects for us. But I'll get to those.
Okay, go ahead.
So the sixteen thousand is for the salary of the firefighters, the city's match for the four firefighters. Fifty-one thirty, fire overtime pay, um, this, and Jennifer ran the numbers thankfully for me. My net is down, so my net overtime spending is down. The increase, cost is up because of coal isn't have been received. The reason for this amount, two things. I've had one firefighter out on extended illness, or injury since July first. The first three months of the fiscal year, I had two firefighters gone for guard duty. They were deployed for nine months. They were out for the first three months of this fiscal year, and I had one new firefighter attending the academy. So twenty-five firefighters' operations. I technically had four gone for a good portion of the first half of the fiscal year in that. And that puts us at our minimum staffing levels every day, so one person takes a day off, it's automatically overtime. The grant, and one of the reasons the request was lower in the budget, and I remember having that conversation, are we gonna get through the year? Yes, but the federal government shut down, so the new firefighters will not have any impact on overtime savings this fiscal year. They graduate the academy the last week of June, July 1st they start. Next fiscal year, those four firefighters will have a significant impact on reducing overtime. And I don't want to guess at a number, but it will be significant.
So are all these things a result of that six-month delay? Like things were built in, predicated on certain things?
Other than, the overtime's the one because of the delay. I budgeted on having those guys, hopefully that they're, they would be full-time through the academy and they'd be saving you on it, but they didn't. A lot of them were the fixed costs, either with the collective bargaining agreement, their benefits, uniform allowance. So it's the cost of hiring them, the city's share, the uniform allowance, this federal government doesn't reimburse us for. But their holiday pay, their incentives, that's all reimbursed by the federal government. So the next one, holiday pay, again, that's the $448.27, that's the city's match for the four new firefighters. 5191, uniform allowance, that covers the cost to provide the four firefighters uniforms in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement. 5243, there's probably a lot of people who would be heartbroken if this didn't get funded. It's $4,800 for the code red system. That was left out in the budgeted process as a cost savings measure. Paid the bills, so I had to take it out of budget. So that, that line item, uh, radio telepho- telephone communications, covers my cell phones, my mobile hotspots, uh, and repairs to radios. So I'm at a huge, I'm at a deficit because of the code red. 5493, uh, building equipment repair and maintenance, that's to cover the necessary furniture and modifications needed to provide living quarters. So when the fire station was built, the, two of the bedrooms were set up so that they could have two beds apiece if we ever decreased staffing over the six. So we needed to buy event lockers, uh, eight-foot office partitions to provide some privacy. That's where that building money is. 5483, repairs to vehicles, this is always the case, uh, I budgeted them out for repairs for fire and outlets, this were preventative. Again, this year was a perfect storm, every year the ladder truck has to go off for an annual maintenance and certification. They followed a whole bunch of things wrong and that bill came in at 5,912.23. And those were immediate repairs ahead of the date in September, otherwise the truck was parked.
How long was that?
Uh, that is 11 years.
What's the general life of something like that?
Well, I'll just, in the 150-plus years of the East Hampton Fire Department...
I thought you were gonna say that he'd been working here.
No, it's 167 days, 11 years.
He's well preserved.
In the 150-plus years, we've had five ladder trucks. So in 2008, this truck was a federal grant, 725,000. That replaced the 1969. And that truck had no roof, it was an open cab. It was great in thunderstorms, I'll tell you that.
Well, they wear their suits on.
So it's fairly headwashed through its life?
Oh, that truck is probably gonna outlive me.
Okay.
You're 150 years old.
Thanks. Then the engine one had quite a few issues. Fortunately for me, Dennis' motor repair was able to do those. Two big items on that was it needed a steering box, that was 1,100 dollars just for the part. And then there was some suspension issues that he fixed, which was another 327 dollars. When I don't get Dennis, or Brett when he was still there, the heavy truck rate for labor is 185 dollars an hour. Engine one sat down and motor repaired for about two months while Dennis worked on that, I didn't even know how many thousands of dollars that saved, but it was work that had to get done.
Same question on engine one?
That is a 2003. Normally they're a 20-year lifespan, it is in the capital for replacement in '23. Whether it gets done, gets done or not.
Okay, but you're in the queue.
It's in the queue and I, yeah, 'cause that would be the last one, 'cause engine...
What did those go for?
Engine two was bought in 2018, equipped, because the equipment that was on that, the hoses, axes, nozzles, were dated back to '73, '77, and 1995, the three years we bought trucks. So this truck came in all fully equipped at about 698,000. And we should get 25 years out of this one. Next one is SCBA maintenance, which is our air packs. 1232, that's the purchase for new masks for the new firefighters. Each firefighter has their own mask, it's a ID thing, plus if it's mine, I take better care of it than if it sits on the truck. 5595, fire equipment, 3,837. That's a partial amount to equip new firefighters with here. The remaining funds are gonna come out of the capital, which council approved last year. Instead of going out another year with capital, we'll spend, I'll spend what I have left of capital for a new turnout here. And then with this, I'll be able to outfit these new firefighters head to toe instead of taking another, I don't know, 7,000 maybe total, 7,500? So it's already, some of that's approved in capital, so instead of taking more out of the cash, I'll just wait, close out that capital. And then 5710, interstate travel, 6,500, that's to cover travel costs for the four new hires to attend the academy in Springfield and that's reimbursement set by the collective bargaining agreement.
Did they live there?
No, now we don't, so until Springfield opened, they went to Stowe. So we had paying mileage to Stowe, we were paying three meals a day, uh, we were able to put them up in fire stations in that part of central Mass. Now they commute to Springfield back and forth. The fire cadens are...
What do we think for mileage and food?
So it's mileage and one meal a day. There's certification exams, three of them that they take that we pay for.
And what's the duration of the...
Uh, it is 12 weeks.
Oh, alright.
So they start in March, they start the academy in April and they'll be done by the 27th of the year.
Okay.
That used to be about the cost per student, was about 6,000 dollars when they went to Stowe.
So I have, uh, what I didn't understand, how much of this again is paying our share of the grant? We just got 160.
So out of personnel services?
I have 35,000.
Yeah, so 160,000 of it is overtime and then...
But then, is that, I'm just asking what...
Yeah, so it's 16,000 there, 448, 36.
So about 35,000?
Yeah, it's our share of the... I trust you.
So we have to pay that for two years?
Three.
Three years. So the elephant in the room, after four years, the grant goes away?
Yes.
But obviously these firefighters have 167 days left. But I happen to know somebody who'll be there then? That's the buck!
That's, that's idiot, right?
I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that the firefighters are, were hiring, we have to find a way to pay for them in four years, correct? Am I right?
Yes, and that is the objective, yes, we are preparing for that, uh...
But from my take, you're saving, what, 160,000 in overtime, maybe July 1st?
So, looking at projecting, when I sat down with the mayor and Melissa at the time looking at this grant, our share of this stuff, when they're onboard, will be covered in overtime savings. So if I could start with these guys, it would be more than that. I'm, and I'm gonna be gone, so you can't yell at me until July 1st.
Oh, but we will.
Next fiscal year, I'm anticipating about a 150,000 dollar reduction in overtime expenses. So use the cover, our match, for all these things that are supplementals now.
My point being that, I don't know if that'll pay for four firefighters four years from now.
It won't.
But, I didn't think so, but, okay. Just wanted to, uh, I'm gonna let Bill ask his questions first.
Did the grant specifically say four people?
Yes. Yeah, the grants are very restrictive, um, and what they look at is meeting a national response standard. We tried under Mayor Kager to hire one or two to get us back to our staffing levels from 1973, '06. And they were approved, and we didn't get approved because we weren't getting to where we need to be with our call volume, which is seven. That's why this one was successful and the one about five years ago, to hire one, was not.
So how much was the grant?
Go ahead.
So I say, how much was the grant for?
Six something, Mayor, if I remember.
640?
Yeah, 642,000.
But that's for three years or four years?
Four, three years.
Three years.
Oh, it's not four years?
Four people.
Fourth, fourth year the city owns them.
Really, I don't know.
Well, I just, I guess, uh, you know, looking at our levels, we had, you know, the total, uh, employee staff or whatever, in all, since 2017, 28 people, roughly 28, 29. So, uh, our call volume last year went down, right? Like almost 400 calls less than the previous year. I was kind of gonna get at, you know, do we need four, but the grant dictates that we need four.
If you read the papers and you're looking at our friends in Amherst, um, where electors do with us. I can tell you today, there was about three and a half hour stint where there was nobody in the station and no elaborate available to respond.
In Amherst?
No, here today, we're like Amherst, where Amherst is empty, there's nothing there. And we are getting there, we can't forecast that another emergency is gonna happen. We have great software that provides us the discount, but the numbers are all over the place. They, we can go, we've gone 10 hours and nobody's turned the wheel. But Christmas Eve, I think it was Christmas Eve morning, they did nine calls by four o'clock in the afternoon. It was just all over the place.
Is it mostly paramedics or...
All over the place.
Fire calls there?
Fire calls, and it's only got the foggy and cloudy snow and...
I'm not saying we don't need more fighters, it's just the four, you know, seems like a huge jump. And then once, to your point, once it's gone, 150 year saving in, in overtime is not gonna happen. And looking at the trends in, in overtime, that was another bring up, if I may. 2017, we spent 280, 2018, we spent 209,000. I understand you explained some of the differences this year, but it seems we always come back for the appropriation, we only budget 150, so this would bring it up to 310. So, so looking over 2018, you know, I mean, we're, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollar difference in overtime. That's, that's accurate, that's what you need, is the 310?
That's actually cut, that's lower, but in that same time span, they probably got, I mean, like 5% pay increase. So as they get pay increases, the cost of overtime goes up.
And there's been some key players that have retired too, you know, in the past couple of years too, so, you know, that also plays a balance of the increase in pay with the heavy hitters at the top.
And I'm like the police, you can't use specials.
I do, I, well, the four new hires right now, because the grant, once, once you start them, the clock starts. So, right now it's full-time employees, they're no good to me, they don't have the training.
Right.
So they are part-time, what we call my call force, until March 1st. So they're coming in, on March 1st, when we hire them, they'll have all their training done, other than the full-time academy. They'll have all the requirements to be ENT in the area. So March 1st, they go on a shift, because I have to, I have six months from the date of award to start these employees. April, they go to the academy. But right now, once these guys are through the process, I may wait and let what my predecessors go through the process with civil service for hiring four more qualified fighters, so we have them. But we've been in a cycle where as soon as I get them, they either leave to go another department or we hire them full-time. So, right now, the best job in the world is here, if you're 20 years old and a paramedic, you'd be pretty much going to any fire department in Massachusetts, a good job, because they're so hard to find.
Are they all guys?
Uh, this group is, yes. As I showed the mayor, civil service list was over 180 names. There were three women, and the first one, it was around 90 or something. And I don't think that's a reflection on the department, but being civil service, sit for the written exam is 150 dollars. Then you have to take a physical agility test, which is another 100 dollars. So you're 250 dollars into taking the process in hopes of getting a job. I can tell you our neighboring departments that aren't civil service are able to attract a more diverse workforce, but being civil service, they try, but we don't have the...
Because you have to do the upfront costs.
Is civil service a collective bargaining item? If we wanted to get out?
Well, the union would have, the union and their state association would have to agree. And cost-wise, uh, and I had this conversation for 11 years, going back to Mayor Taushen, if we were to get out of civil service, the city would have to absorb the cost for an entrance exam and a promotion exam. Right now, I just call civil service and say, give me five names for firefighter or give me two names for captain.
So there's a gun take, it's the benefit of being in civil service and not...
Changing subject to a different line, is that alright? Radio, telephone, and communications, so I just want to know why that one went up. So, actuals in, in 17 and 18 were, were 11,300 dollars. And then in 19, they only budgeted 9,200 and whatever it was. So why do we need 4,000 more that, that's an increase over what we've actually spent in the years past and everything else? And I understand you brought it back to meet a number, but it's only a difference of 2,000 and 2 dollars, not 4,800 dollars, so what's the difference?
The increase in the cost of code red because of our increased use. So we, when messages go out, parking bands, monks, clothes, all the other things we've done, depending how that's set, if it's not set as an emergency, we pay... Like the old days of, of having a pager, you paid so many protection.
Yep.
If it's not set, like, uh, parking band or monk clothes is considered an emergency, parking band is not considered an emergency. So there's a small, it's like a penny per, per message that goes out, it's text. So we, it's a bill for, that's the, that's not even a whole cost for code red, I'm absorbing that through the rest of the appropriation.
So, so we sent out more code red alerts this year. The snow really hasn't been too much, it wasn't out twice, I know, but I'm just saying, like, it doesn't seem, maybe I gotta get into it, and maybe it's another expense in the city and that's why I'm saving the city money there.
Is it, is it whole people lined up?
Uh, it ebbs and flows.
Are you paying for me twice because I'm on a text type phone?
You're the one!
I'm asking, is that a double check?
I yield my text.
We, we have people who get multiple phones, they get... Believe it or not, we probably still...
Forty-seven requests, I guess, so...
I bet you there's over 9,000 landline calls that go out every time. I didn't realize there were still that many landlines on use in people's homes, but...
My wife won't give it up.
And in that line, the reason it's short is because I, my radio repair, my portable radios are about 15 years old. So when they break, they're not supported by Motorola anymore, so I'm finding some reason that started that. And to get away from that, would be required to go to digital. The price I had to go to digital was about 1.9 million. So I figured it's better if I just spend 300.
4,800 versus 1.9 million, I like it. Mayor, you had your hand out.
I have just a quick comment on, on code red. Code red, definitely using it more for non-emergency and I would just want to put this on to the record as we talk about communication and not blind side info, it's a pretty small cost. When you're really struggling with multiple modes of communication.
Seems like a parking band that's not an emergency.
And the mountain, I mean, people really like to know when that mountain's open or closed. Commuters and like kid, you know, pull over the mountain and you're halfway there and find out it's closed and you gotta get your kids to go and...
I think it's important.
Oh, yeah. I will be more economical with my use.
Are we allowed to send out non-emergency communications that way? Or is there like a limit on characters? Could you make a communication around the tax bill, like we've had?
Don't open your hand.
So that's interesting, I mean, I, I don't want to overpart. So we, we have talked in the past, not about that, but other, I mean, code red is code red, you want people to pay attention to it, you know, instead of getting a lot of, so we're, while we use it more... Everyone's very conscious about, you know, like...
The messages.
Yeah. I wouldn't want to alert anyone.
The best example I give to that is, so when it started, they take, I'll hold it, they took the landline database from AT&T in Charter and that goes in there and then people sign up. So we've probably, we've dropped a number of people, because people tell me all the time, I don't care if there's a parking band, I don't go up the mountain, I thought this was for emergencies. So they didn't check when they signed up, you can check out on emergency or non-emergency, I understand. So a lot of people just, they don't want to hear it. I just had a woman, I explained to her where she lived, um, Pine Island Lake in the Tigh Harmony Reservoir, they have a state mandated dam safety plan.
No, I get it, yeah, they're angry about it.
No, and?
Part of their, their thing, if there's a failure, they notify us. With code red, I can geographically circle, circle all that area and just those people get the call, it's emergent, they get it. It's an urgent, they get it. So I said, if you live in that, and this person did, I said, so if something happens at the, with one of those two dams, it's coming down a manhand, you won't get notified. You can go in and edit your account to get emergency only. And the only emergency that goes out now is the mound's closed. Because most people said, I don't care about the parking van, I love street park, but I do care when the mound's closed. And this lady went, well, I do care if the dam breaks.
Alright, it's a good, a good thing. Anything else? One more? Well, it seems to me that one of the things that I'm hearing is that we need to do this appropriation because we're up against a time-critical issue with the grant. We have to have this, these firefighters hired by March first, because if I heard you right, there's a six-month window from the time you got the grant to when you do it. And we have to have this money in place to make sure we can outfit and hire these firefighters.
Jen, how much is it free cash?
Now, in free cash, it started out certified at one point six, then we've done a general standardization to get our capital standardization transfers. So I have one million sixty-three dollars.
And then all of this gets subtracted out?
Right, which if we subtract out all of this, it brings it down to around six hundred thousand.
This plus the one you need?
Yeah.
All of the things that, that.
All under free cash here, yeah.
Anything else, councilor? Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the request from the fire chief for two hundred and two thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Second, did further discussion? Yeah, can I just make a request on the telecommunications line there? Can I just get the email, the bills or whatever on that line, so that I can see the increase, you know, last year to this year on the code red stuff? You know, to verify some of that increase. I'm just curious for my, my own sake.
David, can you mail them directly?
Yeah.
We might as well copy all of this. Anything else for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have two more items that we will take up along with the one eighty-two, which we want to find out more about that at the next meeting, which will be the twenty-ninth. Jen, Val, Mayor, we are going to make these meetings five-thirty from now on, to help Council Lynch, and I don't think it's a lot to ask. So hopefully they don't take two hours like this one did. But the next meeting is the twenty-ninth. Do we have anything else coming at the next council meeting? You know?
I don't know.
Okay, well, we'll add those to it. But for public hearing, this two oh two, Dave, is on it, so you should come. The one eighty-two will be continued, the seventeen thousand is on it, and the two forty-eight is on it. Okay? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I hope this was enlightening to.